Is Attorney Shansky?
I can record now, so.
All right, great, welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this July 24th, 2025 regular meeting of the planning and zoning commission to order. And take attendance, once again, we have John Adusa, Mike Carrum, I would like to seek to replace Andy Rubin, Bob O'Connor, myself, Carol Snowchair, Mike Bugda, John Bird. And then on Zoom, we have Reinhardt and Janet Peckinpah, the commission. And I think with that said, we can go to our first agenda item, which is discussion and possible action on the stipulated agreement to approve in honor of the Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, Inc. versus Town of Madison Planning and Zoning. And Erin, did you want to pull up the text?
Yes.
Ready?
I'll read it. Volunteer.
Sorry. Thank you, Erin. So first, I'd like to ask if there are any outstanding questions, concerns from the commission? No? Okay. This might be really quick, then. We have, we have a document that's, what, four pages that we would like to read into the record, which is the motion to withdraw the appeal with stipulation consent. It says some changes. But he has a copy.
Excellent.
Okay, so we're going to read it. Bob O'Connor, you don't mind?
No, I don't mind. Document number NNI CB246036160S, the Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, Inc. versus Town of Madison Planning and Zoning Commission. This is Superior Court Judicial District of New Haven at Meriden, July 24th, 2025. Motion to withdraw, motion to withdraw appeal with stipulation consent. Plaids, plaintiff, the Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, Inc., plaintiff and defendant Town of Madison Planning and Zoning Commission, especially request that the court approve this motion to withdraw, to withdraw appeal with stipulation consent as provided by Section 8- and the end of the Connecticut General Assembly. Specifically, the parties represented in court agreed to the following. One, plaintiff, the Emily Hall Tremaine Foundation, Inc., is the owner of the property at 6th Opening Hall Road in Madison, Connecticut, located in the RU1 rural residential zoning district. Two, defendant Town of Madison Planning and Zoning Commission, its statutory powers, duties, responsibilities delegated by the Connecticut General Assembly in chapters 126A, 124, and under the Madison zoning regulations, to consider and approve applications for special exemptions in site plan review in Town of Madison. Three, my application filed March 19th, 2024, plaintiff, plaintiff applied to the commission for a special exception permit. A special what?
Exception.
Exception permit pursuant to sections 5.4A and 4.4C of the regulations to establish philanthropic and educational use of the subject property to improve the arts, architecture, and other humanitarian philanthropic and educational exhibits, including meetings, tours, onsite residencies, events, studio, and collaborative space, plaintiffs administrative offices, and museum, gallery store, or as more specifically and fully set forth in the statement of use and project description as amended filed in connection with the application. Four, the public hearing commenced on May 16th, 2024, was continued to June 20th, 2024, July 16th, 2024, August 1st, 2024, and August 15th, 2024, when the public hearing closed. Five, in response to concerns expressed by members of the public, the plaintiff amended its use statement and provided details information about projected, about projected activities plaintiff could conduct in connection with its administrative offices, program of meetings, gatherings, events, and onsite residencies, including days and hours of operation. Plaintiff's experts responded to our queries from the public and the commission. Six, the commission deliberated on the application as meetings on September 5th, 2024, September 19th, 2024, and October 3rd, 2024. Following the commission review of the voluminous record, consideration of the regulatory requirements and the public's comments, the commission made findings of regulatory and plan of conservation and development consistency, as well as finding the proposal was consistent with the comprehensive plan of Town of Madison, invited unanimously on October 3rd, 2024, to approve the application subject to conditions. Eight, by complaint and appeal dated October 29th, 2024, the plaintiff commenced this appeal of the mission's decisions, decision challenging the legality of four of the twenty conditions of approval, appeal. The four conditions appealed include, number 14, events as detailed in the application documents are not permitted onsite. Meeting attendants, including staff, shall not exceed 12 persons. Philanthropic and educational gathering attendance, including support staff, shall not exceed 30 persons. 16, as modeled by the applicant's planner one-year example, program days for meetings, gatherings, and experience guests will not exceed a total of 62 days per calendar year, approximately 17%. As modeled by the applicant's planner one-year example, program residencies as proposed will not exceed a total of 150 days per calendar year, approximately 41%. Experienced guests should be limited to 12 days per calendar year, approximately 3%, with a maximum of two persons per day. 20, programming shall be scheduled such that meetings and gatherings do not overlap with each other. There should be no more than two meetings held per day. Additionally, meetings that occur the same day shall be scheduled at least an hour apart to prevent overlap, to prevent overlap in traffic entering or exiting the site and overlap in onsite parking. At no time, at no time will a meeting occur on any of the four days per month where a philanthropic and educational gathering will occur. 10, plaintiff has challenged the propriety of four conditions of approval in order to protect its ability over time to seek to amend the commission's approval in the future following commencement of operations at the subject property and demonstrations of compatibility plaintiff's use as originally configured. The commission acknowledges plaintiff's interest in preserving its ability to apply in the future to seek to amend the commission's approval. Both parties agreed that in the event of such application, the burden to establish its eligibility for amendment of the special permit shall be in remains with the plaintiff, and that the commission's reviews of such future amendment requests should be treated in the ordinary course of its application review. 12, in no event shall the plaintiff apply to the commission for modification of any one or more of the four conditions set forth herein for at least one year from the date of commencement of operations of the site under the current appeal. Oh, I'll start again. One year from the date that commencement of operations of the site and current approval has commenced, which date should be established by the date of the first meeting, gathering, or experience guest set forth in the annual calendar of all programming proposed, which calendar shall be provided to the Town of Madison so enforcement officer prior to the first program and/or guest, the condition modification rating period. 13, the parties agreed at the condition modification rating period to not bar the plaintiff from requesting modifications to site plan at any time in the planning and construction phase. 14, as required by Connecticut's Rules of Practice 14-7A, the commission included consideration of impossible action on stipulation and withdrawal of this appeal as an item on the agenda of this regular meeting on July 24th, 2025. The parties agreed to be solely responsible for their own cost, fees, expenses incurred during litigation and withdrawal of this appeal. The Emily Hall Foundation, Inc., signed by Attorney Marjorie Shansky, its attorney, 61 East Grand Avenue, New Haven, Connecticut, 06503. Phone number is 203-671-8887. Marjorie dot F dot Shansky, S H A N S K Y, S N E T dot N E T. Juris, your juris number, 303513. Town of Madison Planning and Zoning Commission by Attorney Carrie L. Olson, Harris Beach Martha Kulina, P L L C, its counsel, 280 Trumbull Street, Hartford, Connecticut, 06103, And the email address is Colson, K O L S O, and at Harris, Martha, dot C O. Juris number 040248.
Thank you.
Certification of service, I hear. Do I need to read this?
No.
No, great.
Great job.
Enough.
Thank you. All that. And that will be part of the record, obviously. So.
We need to enter to the motion.
Yeah, we could have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
John, in a second. Further discussion? Opportuny, native by reasons.
Sure, well, we all have this little discussion and explanation, right? So, look, the main reason for this is that it's the best interest of the town commission. Specifically, we heard that there's probably a five-figure legal benefit associated with litigating this. And if we were to go there, there's no guarantee that the commission would fail. That's my amateur opinion that we're on pretty solid legal ground on one condition, but the other three legal opinions seem a little shaky. So, this is the best interest of the commission, best interest of the town. And regarding now to keep coming back, it's one year, at least one year, I'll get against some type of operations. We first want like two, one to two years, and it gives us the full authority and capability to come to the same conclusions that came through last. So, light of all that, we ought to agree to this with the expectation that we'll have another round to go through, perhaps, in a year or two, which will all be public and fully transparent.
Great, thank you. Good summary. You want to add anything else?
Yeah. I would add that there is sort of a fairness issue here. We don't know what the situation will be in one or two or three, three years. It is indeed possible that folks who thought that certain bad events would happen as a result, and they, they may come in and say, no, that hasn't happened. And if these folks want to expand certain things up to that amount, you have no reason to object, or at least to, you know, both sides, or it need not be adversarial anymore. Maybe I'm fantasy land, but the, this commission is giving up nothing as far as the opportunity to say, no, thank you, we heard you, but we disagree.
Thanks. I'd like to just add that I think when, you know, when we made the decisions about the conditions, they were based not on any data, and this way we get the data that we would like to have for future decisions. So I see it as another plus.
The crime rate could triple in the neighborhood as a result of this. All right.
All right. Any other comments or additions? Janet and Bob, are you okay?
No, thank you.
Yeah.
For what you said.
All right, then, let's take a vote to approve. All in favor? Looks unanimous. Thank you. Glad to settle. That's great. All right.
Thank you all for your attention.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Carrie.
I said, I said, thank you all for your attention. Erin, do you want me to stay on for anything that's coming up, or are we?
Um, no, we don't, we just have a coastal site plan. You're more than welcome to listen, but.
You're saying you don't need me?
Not yet.
And I am going to state this on the public, I, I am going to state this on the public record. Janet Peckinpah, I grew up in North Haven, and I watched her on the news for years, as did my parents. And I am just telling you, I am gobsmacked, and I feel like, I feel like I'm in the presence of royalty. I'm just saying.
You're being very, you're being very sweet. Bob Reinhardt just turned off his video, so he didn't have to listen to you.
I know. He did the last time, too. But I was told I should say it during the meeting, so I'm here.
I got places to go tonight.
And it was, it was great to see you.
Good, you too. Thank you for your hard work.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night, thanks.
Good night.
All right, next item on the agenda is a pending application, 25-18 coastal site plan for 113 Buffalo Bay, map 13, lot 1, zone R3, owner Gravowski, Mark R. Trustee, Mark R. Gravowski Revocable Trust, applicant John Bird with Bird Design Architecture. Coastal site plan to demolish existing structures and construct a new single-family home with crushed stone driveway, as well as a new code complying wastewater disposal system. This was tabled from our July 10th meeting, so we'd like to invite the applicants.
Cheer, Madam Chair, Jim Preddy is here from Criscolo Engineering, and ready to present his coastal site plan.
Great, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Jim Preddy, as Erin said, I apologize for not being there in person, but I need to jump on Branford Zoom right after this, so. In any event, can I share the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Can everyone hear okay?
Yes.
It's just a little murky.
Little murky.
Okay, I apologize. I'll, I'll try to enunciate a little better. So this is the property at 113 Buffalo Bay. It's a little over 50,000 square feet. There was a house here for many years, at least since 1968. Before that, there may have been something else, but the house that was here, that was built in 1968, was torn down a few years ago. The guest house still remains and the pool. And then this is the, what's, exists of the paved driveway for the old house. What we're planning to do is take down the guest house and the pool and build a new home with a different kind of a guest house, and I'll show you the floor plan in a minute. The driveway obviously comes in from the outs, off the property in the same location. This will be crushed stone. This is a garage area here, new septic system on the landward side or north side of the property. We are providing some roof water infiltration units on both corners for this little structure, and then for the main structure here, there is city water that comes in through the driveway. And we've provided, you know, standard erosion controls, silt fencing around the outside stockpile, construction entrance, that sort of thing. The floor plan looks like this, and I say guest house, it's truly just two bedrooms and a bathroom. There's not separate cooking facilities, living facilities. They've just, the architect has detached the, the guest bedrooms. The property did many years ago, this is the house that was torn down. This was in an Anderson survey that was done, I believe, in 2017. This, so this was the house that was there that was torn down. We did come here in, I think, 2018, and get a, actually a larger house approved with variances and coastal approval and all that, and then that guy never built it, and has since sold it to the current owner, which is how we got here. So, yeah, we're looking for a site plan approval for a single-family home.
I did provide some, just staff comments and a draft resolution. Believe it or not, because of the statutory extensions that were granted in 2021 from COVID, the current, the 2017 site plan is still valid, believe it or not, so.
Is it because of COVID, or was it?
There were two rounds of it. Yes, but COVID did lead to another extension for length of time that permits would be valid for land use permits. And this, this house is significantly smaller than the last one that was permitted on the property.
How many square feet is the new house?
Approximately 4,000.
It's not small.
The last one was close.
Well, it's small for certain neighborhoods, I suppose.
You don't happen to have an elevation?
Uh, yeah, it is a single-story, hold on.
I think, you know, it's not going to matter in this decision, but I'm just curious.
Oh, hold on.
As you can tell from the rounded edges, it's a contemporary.
Yeah.
Design.
There are a couple other contemporaries in there.
There's the, there's the art, the elevations, and this, with all the windows, is the side facing the water, obviously.
Lot of glass.
Is it just one story?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes, the, the previous house was a much bigger house than this.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any questions?
Oh, last, we did receive Health Department, this is, received local approval and referral up to the state for the central system, correct, Jim? You're just waiting on that.
Just waiting on the letter from the state health, yes.
The guest house and the main house.
Yes, that's why it triggers the state approval, is because they're, they're allowed to share system.
Yeah.
Correct.
And the elevation of the, the sort of cliff that it's on, is high enough so it gets it out of the floodplain?
Yes.
Which is, having been at like one story, all that, all close to the, close to the land.
Yes, it is, it's, it's quite a bit above.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yes, the, the flood zone is elevation 13, and our first floor is at 21, so.
Okay, great. Yes, so as Erin said, she provided us with staff notes and also the draft resolution.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, thank you, John. Second. Next, any further discussion? Janet and Bob Reinhardt, any discussion? We're good.
As written, the following draft, the following draft resolution is offered. The Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application number 25-18 CSP 113 Buffalo Bay, map 13, lot 1, zone R-3, owner Gravowski, Mark R. Trustee, Mark R. Gravowski Revocable Trust, applicant John Bird with Bird Design Architecture. Coastal site plan to demolish existing structures and construct a new single-family home with crushed stone driveway, as well as a new code compliant wastewater disposal system as shown on plan, proposed onsite wastewater disposal system and CAM site plan. Assessors map 13, lot 1, 113 Buffalo Bay, Madison, Connecticut, by Criscolo Engineering, LLC, dated February 26th, 2025, revised to June 20th, 2025. Sheets 1 and 2 and architectural drawings, Gravowski, Sten Residence by Bird Design Architecture, sheets A01, A02, A10, and A11, dated March 28th, 2025, revised to April 10th, 2025, with the following conditions. That the zoning, number one, that the zoning enforcement officer be notified at least 48 hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, that all erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance and be maintained for the duration of construction activities, and until the site is sufficiently stabilized to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. In the event that changes to the approved plans are required as a result of other agency permitting to support the proposed activity, the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modifications of this approval. The commission finds the proposal consistent with all applicable goals and policies in the Coastal Management Act and section 25 of the Madison zoning regulations. The applicant's effort to maintain adequate soil and erosion controls during construction activities reduces potential impacts to onsite and adjacent coastal resources. The applicant's effort to install chambers for stormwater management is noted. Effective date of this approval is August 7th, 2025.
Thank you, John. Hold on a second.
I'll buy the second.
Any further discussion? All in favor to approve? That looks, you know, great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Good night, thanks a lot.
See, we have a receipt of 25-20 CSP 27 Green Hill Place, map 44, lot 4, zone C, owner applicant 27 BB LLC, special exception permit application pursuant to section 6.1.3G to request a maximum average building height of 33.83 feet for the construction of a new single-family dwelling. This application includes a coastal site plan, and I'd like a motion to schedule a public hearing for this application for August 21st, 2025. Second. Sorry, Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor? That will be in August as a public hearing. Next, we have Other Business, which is the Comprehensive Zoning and Subdivision Regulation Update Review and Recommendation of Planning Consultants to Assist the Commission in Updating Regulations, and Erin, turn to you.
Sure, we had a nice response from our Q RFP, looking for consultants to assist with the subdivision and zoning code update that we have funded in this fiscal year and next, or excuse me, last, and now that we're in July. And this year, the project is a total of $85,000. We had four respondents, and myself and Maria Petola, our zoning officer, and Carol Satin met with the, the four respondents. All were very impressive and had great resumes and experience. Ultimately, our recommendation is to work again with Taike Planning Policy Group. Our reasons for choosing the firm are their familiarity with the town, having been involved in the master plan process, and really the experience of the staff that is on hand there, number of certified zoning enforcement officers, and their ability currently to work on behalf of municipalities by administering zoning rights. So they act as zoning officers in many municipalities and can provide that experience for some suggestions for practical regulations in areas that we're looking for, specifically those areas of policy change or where things might work. And it is a nice working relationship that both the commission and staff have developed with the firm over the last few years here with their involvement in town, so we're really excited to recommend them for this project. Yes, yes.
Which will be helpful for housing.
And so it's a shared process of, of staff, you know, carrying some responsibilities as well, both through the writing process and public outreach process, and likely as we work towards signing contracts and getting Board of Selectmen approving that, we're hoping to have kickoff for September for really getting started. So rest up in August and.
Get ready for the next.
And then put your brains on.
Hello, you know, Erin, I do want to say that this is very different from the Plan of Conservation and Development, and so, first of all, the, the existing regulations just need to be. And so, first of all, the, the existing regulations just need to be reviewed and cleaned up, which consultants will do. Um, I mean, we can have some input, I think, occasionally, but you and, you and, um, Maria will be working more closely with them, I think, and then we'll, we'll be weighing in at different times, but much less involved, I think, and not, not actually drafting as much as we did with the P O C D.
There, there is regular, um, check-ins and building, uh, you know, I think that's something that we can, uh, one other reason why we chose Taike is that flexibility of our approach on how to, um, handle that. If there are certain policy items, like we've been working through those housing discussions, to be able to have a working group specifically on those items and pulling in the, the various folks who can help, uh, with suggestions, whether it's economic development, whether it's affordable housing, things like that. Um, and then, yeah, a lot of it is going to be behind the scenes organization, uh, legal checks and things like that. Um, but the whole process, the document will be, um, tracked from beginning to the end. And, uh, so we'll be able to see where, where we do make edits.
And we just see the end being about sixteen months out?
Twelve, twelve to sixteen months the project, um, should take.
We have say in the, uh, the actual changes that we made or is that done by the consultants?
So this is, the Planning and Zoning Commission has ultimate authority over the regulations. This is your document. Um, the, the process for adopting the document is a public hearing process, um, by the commission. Yes, working through, um, if what you're suggesting isn't legal, then no. You know, I mean, there, there, there are some caveats, but, uh, yes, ultimately, this is, this is a, a document that you are, um, you will review the whole thing and, um, asking questions where needed, making suggestions. Um, and again, we're here, the both professional staff, you have two certified zoning officers and staff as well as, um, others, so to be able to help. So feel free to start reading the existing regulations suggestions.
You do?
You have insomnia.
Is there, um, I know that you, oh, I'll talk about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of have a kickoff once we, uh, connect and, and look at our approach. Uh, so I'm, I'm sure we'll have a, a meeting coming up.
Okay.
Um, with the consultants and.
In September.
Yeah, to, to see how, how we'd like to move forward.
Okay, so that's exciting. Um, we have an administrative approval, which has already been, uh, done by Maria, our zoning officer. We just twenty-five dash nineteen, three forty-one Opening Hill Road, map ninety-four, lot five, zone RU one. Owner applicant, The Country School, Inc., minor site plan, a lot of patience to the previously approved special exception application number twenty-five dash, twenty-four dash forty-five to modify building location, driveway width, and parking configuration. Do you want to describe a little bit about the very?
This is on your agenda because the regulations require the zoning officer report to you anytime she takes administrative action. Uh, and minor site plan modifications are defined in your regulations, specific size, things fall under the zoning officer's jurisdiction. In this particular case, it's the same project, the same, uh, steam classroom and storage facility underneath for, uh, Country School.
I remember that.
Um, it was recently approved. Um, they ran into, uh, a septic system that was not, uh, expected in a particular area, had to repair the septic system and shift the building slightly over, um,
To accommodate that.
To the north. And that's really the extent of the project. It ended up pulling it out of what ends up on the review area, um, but not a significant change to require having to come back. Um, and there's no change to the use, so there's no need to come and modify the special exception itself.
Okay, thanks, Erin.
Sure.
Next approval of minutes, um, Secretary John Dusa?
Sure, July tenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, members of President Reinhardt, Snowblood, O'Connor, Dusa, Morgan, and Rubin. Motion for approval. What? On second? Uh, any edits or corrections?
Didn't see anything.
I didn't see any either. Motion to approve? Great.
Approved, great, okay. Um, remarks? Erin, did you want to?
No, none. Did I?
Yeah, how about the, um, final decision or the final, uh, ledges?
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry. Um, yes, if any of you had subscribed to the Downey case.
Yeah.
Uh, and got a notification from the court system. It, it was a matter where the judge made her decision, but the, um, case was never removed from the docket.
Okay.
And so there, there, so it wastes time and money is what that was. So it required, because, uh, Judge Wilson is no longer, uh, presiding in Superior Court, it needed to be transferred to Judge Youngblood. And there needed to be a status conference to ask all parties if they were fine to dismiss this from being on the docket. And so that happened yesterday.
So we're, so we're done?
Uh, with, well, that, we were done with that quite some time ago, last year.
Yeah.
There is, no, there is still one pending appeal.
Okay, that's good to know.
Uh, on, on the ledges.
That could clear that.
But it'll be back after that, okay, Jim?
Okay, thanks, Erin.
Thanks.
Um, on that note.
Yes.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second, Tom Morgan.
Can I, can I ask a question before we?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry.
There, so, and I'm, I'm eight, seven, five, I think it's eight, eighty, um, Boston Post Road. There, it was a, um, uh, physical therapist going in, building a new building.
Eighty-five, yeah, yeah.
And that, that's now for sale.
Yeah, we saw that.
I just wondered if, if you could, like, bring us up to date a little bit on what happened? Obviously, that guy's not going in there with the.
I, yeah, I, that's about all, is that the property is for sale now.
Yeah, where old Elizabeth was.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so the demolition occurred, a septic system was installed, and now there is a for-sale sign. So I don't know.
Okay, so you don't know.
Put in any contact with any potential buyers or, um, so there's a special exception and, and it was a major alteration in downtown. Village District to build that.
Right, the building.
Agreed, Revival.
Yeah. Um, so that permit still stands, so if somebody purchased the property and, um, you know, the approval runs with the land, so if somebody wanted to purchase and, and build that.
And so all they do is flatten it and cap off all the utilities. That's, that's where it stands.
And they put in septic. The septic system, my understanding, the septic system was installed.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to hold up your German.
So can I ask a follow-up question? About the general residence and the sidewalk that we get?
Yes, that will be on your next agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, the developer was out of the country this week. So, um, I, I pushed that off so that you have.
To the developer.
So he can be here to talk to you.
Oh, boy.
Wow.
Any other personal questions? All in favor of your names?